Do you hear something?
Yep.
All right, it's 6:31. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Champaign County Board Committee of the whole. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Passalacqua.
Here.
Paul. Rodriguez.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Shab.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson. Wolken.
Here.
Ammons. Oh. Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Humphrey. King.
Here.
Laxton.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Michaels. Patterson.
Here. All right, could I have an approval of the agenda and addenda?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Goss. Is there any alterations or adjustments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, can I have an motion for the approval of the minutes of June 15, 2021, the regular meeting?
So moved, Harper.
Second, Passalacqua.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have public participation. I have one person signed up, Micah McMahon.
Good evening, everybody. So, I was here a couple weeks ago. I spoke to everybody here, and I noticed there was a lot of discussion that took place after that. I also come here also more as a plea. For the past, I'd say, year and a half, many of us in Corrections have worked a lot. You know, our retention is difficult at the moment. And we've had a lot of people that have been struggling, both physically and mentally. Every day we come to work, we decide to come in, you know, because we truly do love our job. We come to work wearing our uniform, we come doing what we have to do, what we have been sworn to do. And it's been more and more difficult each day, you know, with what we've been facing, whether it's safety issues, whether it's other issues that still need to be brought up. But one thing I believe that may assist in this retention issue that we face is COVID premium pay. And I know it's a discussion's been talked about numerous times, and I know it was back and forth at the last meeting. But I can definitely ask as a plea, you know, we need a win. Our people need a win. You know, we've been losing officers left and right, you know, from whether it be the stress for other jobs. But they are still choosing to this day to come in every day. And now I have to ask you as a board, please, please, consider, you know, heavily in giving these people a win, you know. And I'm not even talking for myself, I'm talking for my fellow officers. Because, you know, we've been exposed on numerous occasions, you know, by COVID-positive inmates that come in there. And it's not just a, you know, high and goodbye situation. We work 24/7 with these same people because some of these individuals that come in that test COVID-positive, they aren't able to leave immediately. You know, whether through court situations or what have you. They are forced to stay in our custody, and we do provide the care that they need. And that includes close contact, that we are wearing our PPE as best we can, and unfortunately, that means we have to bring it home. And it exposes other people. My wife, for instance, wasn't able to see her family for over a year, do this because of fears of spreading it. You know, I do my best to try and prevent the spread as well. But, and that's not the situation that, you know, that I bring to you, but it's just one of the situations I can speak on from personal experience. But I do ask, as you do discuss these in the future, please consider that. Again, I say this because we need a win. So, and I am asking this board to really heavily consider this. You know, I know there's a lot of other departments that are requesting this as well. I'm not here to speak on who's, which department is more deserving than the other. But I do, I do ask that you consider this. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, I have Mike Ingram.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see everybody, kind of. This is the first time I've come to a real meeting, I think, obviously, most of us, it's probably the first time we've come to real meetings. But since I haven't been on the board, so it's nice to see everybody that I used to sit on the board with. I wanted to speak a little bit about an issue we've been having lately. This probably impacts all of your constituents. There's a fresh round of scam letters that are going out for people who have bought houses recently, or if they've refinanced. These are letters that will go to, they use public information that they can access, of course, because our information in our office and the Recorder's Office is public information. They'll use that, and people will get a letter in the mail that says it's from something sounding like it'll be the local records office, or, you know, something that sounds official. And basically, it's just a way to try to bilk a little bit of money out of people who maybe don't know that they can get their deed copies from us or from other counties for free or very cheap. So this basically comes into your, to your physical mailbox and says, "Hey, you just bought this property. If you'd like a copy of your deed, we'll do all the work for you to get it." And they charge anywhere from 80 to 110, 120 bucks, which is not the worst thing in the world if you got scammed by this. It's not the thousands of dollars that some of these other scams will get. But, you know, it's real money, and it's a tough year for a lot of people. So if your, you know, grandparent or your parents got it and possibly decided to send some money, that's kind of, you know, especially if they're on a fixed income, that's a problem. So, we've shared a post about this on the Recorder of Deeds Facebook page. If you hear anybody talking about it, or if you want to share that post, that would be great. I'm sure it has gone to people in every one of your constituencies, because we see people in the Recorder's Office every day who either walk in or call in asking if it's, like, if it's real, if it's a thing. I, to be clear, I do not think that, I haven't found any evidence this is a property fraud scam. Nobody's, I don't think they're taking anybody's, trying to defraud people. They just are trying to get in the middle and charge somebody for something that they get from us for very cheap and then mark up, when really, they could, the homeowners, so that you know, and so that all of your constituents know, can get a copy of their deed from my office for free anytime. So anyway, please, if you, if you hear anything about this, again, it looks super official because they try to make it look official. And then down at the bottom, there's a little fine print that says, "We're not affiliated with any counties." So, please do maybe keep an ear and an eye out for that from your, from your folks, because we don't need people in our county sending money to, I think it's Pekin and Naperville are the two FedEx boxes that they use for these right now. So. Also, just as a side note, I wanted to speak a little bit about, I don't know what's going to happen with meetings, of course, coming up. I'm sure that everybody's trying to figure out what's going to happen, if things are going to go back remote or not. I'd highly encourage the board to take a look at changing the board rules so that you can allow remote meeting access. If this fall is looking like it's going to, and people want to continue to have in-person meetings, some people are going to occasionally be under quarantine, I would imagine, and wanting to attend but can't. And I think it'd be very prudent for the long run, after COVID, I can, I could see a situation where Stan or Aaron had to be in the field, or, you know, somebody didn't want to drive from Ranthool in the ice, or somebody just had to be out of the country for work. I think it would be helpful if we could make sure that everybody has the ability to attend virtually if they, if they need to. I know that it adds a little bit of an extra hiccup, but I think it would be important. And I think it would allow us to more frequently have full board meetings with everybody in attendance. And I would also really like to encourage people to look into allowing remote public comment, which can be a little dicey. But if we talk about wanting to hear from our constituencies and how often we don't hear from them, opening it up to that would actually help us hear from them more frequently. And that's my time. Thanks.
All right, are there any more members of the public that would like to address the board? All right, next on the agenda is Communications. Do any board members have Communications? Chris?
Thank you, Chair Patterson. I ask for a moment of silence in sympathy with one of our long-serving board members who suffered the loss of her daughter because of violence in our community. Though you'd all like to say something to Lorraine privately, but I think public knowledge would... Thank you.
Are there any board members with Communications? All right, seeing none, now we have the Finance Committee. Steffi.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is Budget Amendment 21-00044, Fund 679 Child Advocacy Center, Department 179. Child Advocacy Center, increased appropriations $6,000, increased revenue $5,690. Reason: Increase in appropriations and revenue following increase in funding from grant. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goss.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Goss. Motion, Lorraine, second. Lorraine, second. Discussion. I don't see any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, Budget Amendment 21-00043, Fund 080 General Corporate, Department 140 Correctional Center. Increased appropriations $17,450, increased revenue $17,450. Reason: Receipt of revenue funds from county insurance claim from satellite incident of 7/14/2021. CCSO will use other appropriated funds from our budget to pay the difference for the purchase of a new transit van. Do I have a motion? Dan. Michaels, first. Second? Passalacqua, second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment 21-00045, Fund 080 General Corporate, Department 040 Sheriff. Increased appropriations $10,225, increased revenue $10,225. Reason: Receipt of revenue funds from county insurance claim from accident with squad car. CCSO will use other appropriated funds from our budget to pay the difference for the purchase of a new squad SUV. Do I have a motion? Michaels, first. I saw Summers, second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I will say, I can't really see your table, so if you got, if you feel free to just be like, talk. Budget 21-00046, Fund 080 General Corporate, Department 140 Correctional Center. Increased appropriations $494,100, increased revenue zero. Reason: Funds needed for expenses associated with outside prisoner boarding for fiscal year '21. And I would like to mention that the sheriff is here if anyone has questions on this one. Motion. Mary, second. I saw Leah, second. Discussion.
Could the sheriff come up, please? Some questions.
Can we have discussion, or are we going to talk to the sheriff first?
The sheriff up, so if you have a sheriff question, or, and if it's a general question. Jim, do you have a question that you wanted to raise?
I'll wait and hear what he has to say first, and then I might answer some questions.
Dan, did you have a question, and you wanted us to hear from the sheriff first?
Mine's basically just a comment. I'm going to support this because, in my opinion, we're in a crisis mode with our jail facilities. We've heard from staff, we've heard from Captain Vogus recently and over the years. I've been here nine years. The first ILPP study was, was going on when I got on the board. We had the first preliminary from Dr. Kalmanoff the winter of my three or four months onto this board. Yet nothing's happened. My proposal's going to be, and I will discuss this tomorrow, if Mr. Summers will allow me at facilities, that we dedicate $10 million right now out of the ARPA funds to get this going. I don't think we need a task force. We've had study after study after study. We have files of plans in Dr., or Mr. Brenner's office. This needs to have, be an action item. Of that $10 million, this $494,000 is for four months. So you're spending $2 million a year to house people out of this county. If we don't see the need to move forward with closing the downtown facility, consolidating with the construction we can possibly do, there again, I'd have to check with Tammy what our bonding possibilities are. But this... what our bonding possibilities are, but, uh, this is something that needs to, needs to happen and needs to happen now. I've been here nine years, nothing. Nothing. I, I mean, if we're going to kick it down the road, good luck to you, Dustin, but, uh, it's time for action, folks. And, uh, as I said, I will probably just bring this up with Mr. Summers tomorrow at our facilities meeting since it was canceled last week. Thank you.
Dustin, can you speak to your proposal?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, uh, letting me speak to you a little bit today. Um, so the issues at the downtown jail and staffing issue should not be new to you because I've been bringing them to you here for a while now. Um, and I wouldn't bring a proposal like this for outside prisoner housing if I didn't believe it was absolutely necessary at this point. Um, I actually started as thinking, well, what if we did this? And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, okay, this actually makes sense. And I'll kind of explain why. I'll try not to, um, completely read this memo word for word, but I'll try to explain a little bit why this is important. Um, couple of reasons. The number one is staffing issues. So my goal with relocating 70 inmates out of county would be to close the downtown jail. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that's 100% possible right now because of classification issues. Um, another reason that has come up why this is important is because of COVID-19 and the Delta variant. We have seen an increase in, uh, gun-related violence and arrests associated with that violence. And so all of those people who are arrested come to the Champaign County Jail. And we have a 10-day quarantine process right now. I assume it'll probably go back to 14 as things start ramping back up with a Delta variant. We work very closely with, uh, CUPHD. We do not have room to properly quarantine inmates upon, uh, upon intake. This is the first time we've really had as big of an issue as what I'm seeing. Um, and my jail superintendent is here tonight, though her purpose is not to come and speak to this, so I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions. We owe it to inmates coming into custody to make sure that they are as safe as possible from COVID-19. We simply cannot do that right now with our housing. That has kind of happened since I drafted this memo and, uh, and submitted it for the board's agenda. My primary purpose for this is that we know that the downtown jail is something, a major incident is waited, waiting to happen there. We've had several correctional officers, at least a couple, who have been battered over the last year, um, and inmates as a result as well. We cannot let our employees be in that environment. We cannot let our inmates be in that environment. I am really short-staffed right now. I am down, uh, I believe we said 12 on the floor, um, 12 on the floor right now. And we have done several things behind the scenes to try to increase our numbers. We've spoken with the Merit Commission to consider those from the law enforcement list for corrections. We've also, a proposal tonight is a proposal for a hiring incentive for correctional officers, not only to get them in the door, but also to retain them, because it costs me a lot of money to train, uh, correctional officers, any employee, it costs me a lot of money. My point is, is this is not a quick fix. We are looking at least a couple of months. Um, I would say at least this four months before we would be able to get at least a safe level of staff at the jail. And that's not back up to full staff. It takes us about two months to get a correctional officer vetted, hired through the training process, and that's not even including going to the police training, uh, going to Corrections Academy. So this proposal is, uh, is aimed at getting as many inmates out of the downtown facility as possible, to reduce the inmate-to-correctional-officer ratio that we're currently seeing because of safety issues and also because of COVID-19 that we're starting to see in the jail again. Uh, as I told you last year about this time, we see, um, things we see in the community, we see in the jails as well. And so, um, the jails aren't immune to those things. And so, uh, we are in the process now of transferring out up to 30 inmates, uh, this week to a neighboring county because of COVID-related issues. And I believe that ARPA funds can, um, help cover some of those costs for COVID-related issues, but I don't believe they'll be able to cover this entire 70, uh, 70 inmates relocation. Um, so those are some options at that point. Um, trying to think of any other, uh, so a question I've gotten is what's going to happen after four months whenever, uh, whenever this money's done? Well, I chose four months because that's the end of the fiscal year. Um, I can't appropriate that money past the, past the four months. That is up to the county board to decide if, I, I mean, we're going to be working really hard to get staffing levels back up. I by all means do not believe we should bring inmates back to the downtown jail, but I think we'll be in a better position in four months than we currently are with staffing. This is a lot of money. I'm a taxpayer too, right? I don't want, I don't want money to go to something that we can avoid, but I truly believe we are at a point to where we cannot, uh, continue the way we've been continuing and we've got to take some action on this. Um, I'm more than happy, you know, I'm a straight shooter. I've, I've talked to you guys back and forth. I'm not going to BS you or anything. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this, um, or any suggestions you may have that we haven't thought about, but we, we spend hours and hours and hours trying to decide the best way forward for our corrections officers and our correctional division. And it all comes back to, to this. This would solve a lot of problems at this point, and it would also help reduce the amount of liability that the county's currently under.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Stan said that it's been this way since he got here. I don't think I came much longer after he got, than, than he was here. Uh, we've been talking about the downtown jail and it's, the shape it's in, lack of safety for both staff and people. Uh, I think that's been the same issue since you got here. How long have you been here?
Three years.
Three years. We've been discussing this. Uh, what do you think kind of deterrent it is when the county board does not support the jail and its reconstruction to people who are worried about going to jail if they don't think there's any space in the jail? What kind of deterrent is it?
I would feel comfortable saying that I would like to think the county board would like to take care of its facilities and its employees.
But we haven't done that for the last 10 years since I've been here. We haven't protected the staff. Staff has been injured on the job. The people that are there because of the short staffing and the crumbling downtown jail, because we haven't done our jobs, are, are worried about injuries and, and what could really happen in that jail with short staff. But yet, we're talking about another committee. I don't mind another committee. I want to know when we're going to do something. If that jail crumbles because it's been crumbled, been due to crumble for years now, then it'll be $2 million a year, and we won't be prepared. And we'll be paying $2 million the next, next four or five years for the time it would take to build additional pod and, and jail cells. And people will be in unsafe jail, and we'll be paying $2 million a year for moving people and then the construction of the jail behind schedule because we'll be doing an immortals emergency we're already in. So I appreciate everybody, everything the staff is doing, corrections officers yourselves. Um, it's an untenable situation. We haven't done our jobs. Jail is not done. We don't even have it on the schedule yet. We haven't discussed it besides Stan's, uh, statement about $10 million. When are we going to do it? Thank you.
Jacob?
Thank you, thank you for your time. It sucks that we're in a spot where we have to do something like this. Um, my two questions were out of the 70, uh, for the four months. Those are going to be people that are, have already been sentenced and have time, are not going to spend, and it's going to make it easier for your life too. We're talking about getting her the most dangerous so you can, can get safety up. Or, or, or other counties or wherever we're looking, willing to take those. I saw that you're going to discuss with them. I would like if we're paying to hold somebody somewhere else, it's, will make it easier for you guys. Has that been discussed?
So, um, you've heard us say time and time again that if we had to close the downtown jail tomorrow, we'd be strapped for where do we're going to send inmates? Well, this is the same, and honestly, um, I'm lucky that the sheriffs that I've spoken to so far have not said this Delta variant is getting us and we can't take anybody. Um, they have not said that. I hope they're not listening to us right now. The thing with classification is a sheriff can decide who he wants to take, who he or she wants to take and who they can't. So we have 13 inmates right now that have been found unfit to stand trial. They have been sentenced to, or they've been sentenced to go to the Department of Human Services. Um, Department of Human Services has not taken them yet. They have mental illness, according to the court. No sheriff is going to take those. We have, um, every day, it seems like every five minutes or so, we get an email about a fight in one block or another against different, uh, types of people who we just didn't know had conflicts. Um, sheriffs aren't going to take problematic people. And why I can't tell you that we're going to close the downtown jail 100% with this, even though we're going to try our hardest, is because we don't, we do, the downtown jail has a lot of isolation. They have a lot of single-cell space or space for a couple of inmates, not an entire cell block. And so we can't put those who, let's say, you know, shooters out in the county, we can't put those two together. That's just going to be terrible, right? And so all of these classification issues, sheriffs pay attention to that. So we're going to make it as easy as we can on other sheriffs and ourselves, but we're going to be stuck with the, with the ones, uh, who are problematic and the mental health issues.
Uh, one more, one more question. Thank you. What's the likelihood of, of, of having this jail cleaned out? We start some improvements and then it gets to a spot where it's deemed that we can't bring people back? What's, what, is there a, a real likelihood of us being stuck, sending 70 people out and then deeming we can't bring them back?
I think the bigger question would be, do we want to bring them back? Um, every day I wait for somebody to come in and say, uh, the jail's closed. You know, the lawsuits that we get, um, about jail conditions, things like that. I keep waiting for that and I've challenged this county board for three years to say, what happens if we have to close the jail tomorrow? But we haven't had to close the jail tomorrow. And so we kind of keep pushing that, that, uh, can, kicking that can down the road. So if we have to bring them back, I think we could bring them back with increased staffing to be able to make it safer. But my recommendation, if you said, Sheriff, do you want to bring them back or do you not want to bring them back? Absolutely not. Let's close that downtown jail and let's get them out of there.
One quick thing. Then obviously we'd have to put $2 million in the next year's budget to put them somewhere else, if, if the other sheriffs will take it.
Uh, yes, so that would be around about, um, we are looking between $45 a day per inmate and $65 a day per inmate, um, depending on which county will accept some inmates. I have found a couple of counties that will accept all inmates, but the thing we have to keep into consideration is that we're also responsible for, uh, medical costs of those inmates. So that's going to increase that rate. We're also responsible for transporting back and forth those inmates to court hearings. Um, that's going to add, I don't have staff to do that right now. And so it's very important that we work with those other sheriffs to work out something. If somebody bonds out in Clinton, uh, we have to bring them back. We cannot hold them past when that bond is set because that's illegal. So we have to have a plan in place and we've been working on that. That's why it's important to Whit County, for an example. That's why it's important we have that plan for when this happens, this, these are the steps we're going to take. So there's a lot that goes into this. Um, that would be a lot easier with one facility and a lot more staffing. Um, I get the question a lot, well, do, uh, what happens when the downtown jail closes? You're going to have a lot extra staffing, right? Well, we've actually, over the last several years, gone down staffing and we have one person working a pod now to where there should be at least two people working that pod. Um, we're going to need transport units, things like that. And so this, this is such a big issue that we're trying to take it piece by piece and do the best we can with what we've got and then keep working on it as we go.
Diane and then Kyle.
Um, real quickly, one of the things that has to do with this also is that, um, we have been required to make ADA adjustments and we have been extended and extended and extended multiple times. And I feel also that fixing that does not fix the jail. That just puts a Band-Aid on the items that are required, but it does not, um, give that facility the, um, appropriate, um, it's not, it would be an inadequate facility just by doing the ADA and not the rest of the work that is required. So housing these people somewhere else and then also, um, having to do it for long-term because the jail really is not capable, um, to have the inmates in a, uh, facility that is, um, a minimal of what is required, um, I think would be very difficult. So I, I, I don't see why we don't just cut our loss and get going. And it's unfortunate that we would have to spend this amount of money, um, to have this all come to light, but it's needed.
Um, do you have, uh, are other counties going to have like the video capability to do the arraignments?
So there are some court hearings that the defendant has to waive. There, uh, so if a defendant does not waive, so for an example, a preliminary hearing. Um, if a defendant does not want to waive that, um, or do it via Zoom, for an example, then we would have to bring that defendant back here to Champaign County. There are other things to where we have been talking with the sheriff in, uh, Clinton County as an, or in, uh, DeWitt County, for an example, here with these 30 inmates about Zoom capabilities and trying to reduce as much as possible the transporting needs of these inmates. Because not only is it an inconvenience for us and it takes personnel, but it's also a security risk every time we have to remove an inmate from a facility and then take them somewhere else.
And for staffing for transports, uh, is, is that something that one deputy does or is that two have to go along?
It just depends on the classification of that inmate, how far they're going, those types of things.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Dustin, you might want to hang out because you're the next item as well and then you're some more down a little bit further, so just get comfortable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up, I have Budget Amendment 21-00047, Fund 080, General Corporate, Department 071, Public Properties, Increased Appropriations $7,500, Increased Revenue $0. Reason: Engineering study for video surveillance at Satellite Jail, Sheriff's Office Downtown Jail, and Brookins and Master Control Systems at Downtown Jail and Satellite Jail. Do I have a motion? Lorraine? Do I have a second? Jen? Strab? I will say that in our conversations, in our Finance Agenda meeting, we did say that if, um, if we did move towards not bringing people back to the downtown jail or there was a decision made that the downtown jail would not be part of the scope, then obviously we wouldn't plan for something that we don't anticipate, you know what I mean? Like, so we would adjust that if we need, and there might be some cost savings in relationship to that. Any, no discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, is anybody against me doing the next nine together? All right, so Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 15-025-0334. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 20-032-0-0213. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 30-058-0295. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 04-002-0138. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel -04-002-0089. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 30-054-0030. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate on Purchase on a Mobile Home Permanent Parcel 04-006-0-0213. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on Real Estate Permanent Parcel 02-01-31-178-006. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on Real Estate Permanent Parcells 02-01-31-178-005. Do I have a motion? Jen Strab? Second. Esri? Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, next, I wanted to mention that, that we have the Auditor's Report available on the website. You have a memo about the Bancorp conciliations and how the auditor and the treasurer and, um, plan to, um, allocate those, um, information. And does anybody have any questions for the And does anybody have any questions for the auditor? We will go to Diane, and then we do have an, an item that I think requires action, and I have, but, Auditor Dianos, there was a question for you.
There was.
Just a quick one, hi. On here, it says, "The Treasurer's Office will deliver completed set of the 2020's Collector reconciliations by September 30th," which is coming up pretty quick. Do they feel pretty good that they're going to be on target for that?
I think they're partitioning their time so that the county recs are done in August and that the collector recs are done in September.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I apologize, am I, is this an action item, the next one? Okay. Approval of award or contract to the Reviews Committee recommendation, or, here, the RFP 21-2021-005 Evaluation Team recommends the award of a contract for financial audit services to Clifton Larson Allen, and it's, this is, we are now on the yellow piece of paper. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goss, do I have a second? Discussion. Do you want to speak to this process?
We took in, to account the feedback from all the members of the evaluation committee. I think the final score was something like 168 to 161, and that the preferred firm was preferred by a strong majority of those on the evaluation team.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries. All right, back to the sheriff. Approval of application and, if awarded, acceptance of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Assistant Grant. Does anybody have any, or, do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, second. Mr. Esri, does anybody have any questions about this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of a sign-on incentive for correctional officers hired in 2021. Do I have a motion?
So, I'm right.
Ms. Taylor? All right, sorry, Ms. Taylor first, Mr. McGuire second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for approving employee health insurance and related benefit plans for fiscal year 2022? Ms. Michaels, so moved, do I have a second? Ms. King? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Request for job evaluation contact committee review of new application support specialist position. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor? And Mr. Straub is the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You also have an update from the executive on your packet. Other business? Don't see any. Chair's report, don't have any. Designation of items to be included on the finance, or, on the consent agenda, I have A 1 through 4, B 1 through 9, C 3, D 1 and 2, and E 1 and 2. That square? All right. And with that, I give you back the gavel.
All right, next on the agenda is policy personnel appointments. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman Patterson. Monthly HR report is in your packet. We have several appointments or reappointments, 29 in total. If there's no objection, we'll do this as an omnibus motion. Lot of nodding. This would be a good time for a bathroom break. Resolution appointing Lyle Brock.
Mr. Store. I think you can read these by just, the dates are, should be all the same, whereas you go down through the drainage districts, so you could potentially just read the dates once and then read all the names, if that would help you.
Okay. All right. Resolution appointing, I guess, repeat what you just said?
I was just suggesting you could say, "These are all appointments to drainage districts for these dates," and then read the name and the date of the district for the, yeah.
All right. All right. Resolution for appointments to a number of drainage districts. Lyle Brock to Beaver Lake Drainage District. Delmar Banner to Conrad and Fisher Mutual Drainage District. Gerald Resteck to Fountainhead Drainage District. Brian Emkees to the Kerr and Compromise Drainage District. Dirk Rice to the South Fork Drainage District. Rick Wolken to the Long Branch Mutual Drainage District. Tim Hulse to the Drainage District Number 10, Town of Ogden. Gerald Henry to the Oakaw Drainage District. Leonard Stocks to the Owl Creek Drainage District. Jeffrey Little to the Passodam Slough Drainage District. Keith Harms to the Prairie Creek Drainage District. Kevin Wolken to the Rob Drainage District. Reggie Peters to the Salt Fork Drainage District. Lloyd Henry, or Lloyd Esri to the St. Joseph Number 3 Drainage District. William Schumate to the Somer Number 1 Drainage District. Barry Fisher to the St. Joseph Number 6 Drainage District. Bruce Killian to the Sangamon and Drummer Drainage District. Greg Smith to the St. Joseph Drainage District. David Wolken, oops, to the Triple Fork Drainage District. Davis Fruleng to the Union Drainage District, Number 2 of St. Joseph, and Ogden. Colton Allen to the Union Drainage District, Number 3 of South Homer and Sidney. Donald Maxwell to the Upper Embera River Basin Drainage District. Ed Decker to the Union Drainage District, Number 1 of Philo and Urbana. Richard Peevler to the West Branch drainage district. Francis Laughhang, Laughhengang, oh, Laughhagen, Laughenhagen, Laughenhagen. Francis Laughenhagen, excuse me, to the Risk Drainage District. Paul Burrbaum to the Drainage District Number 2, Town of Scott. Douglas Reiner to the Passodam Consolidated Drainage District. Susan Frobish to the Board of Review.
Those are different ones.
Whoops, hold on.
Yeah, you're, you're.
All of these drainage districts have a term ending from September 1st, 2021, to August 31st, 2024. Thank you very kindly to these fine folks who volunteer and work their time.
I'll make that a motion, Chris.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Have a resolution appointing Susan Frobish to the Board of Review, an expired term ending May 31st, 2022. Mr. Summers, second. Mr. McGuire, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolution appointing Deborah Estes to the Board of Review, an expired term, May 31st, 2022. Motion? Ms. Michaels, Ms. Taylor, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Both those pass. We have a number of vacant appointments. List is in your packet. A good number of them are court service officers and correctional officers, as we've already Have also a number of appointments for boards, and that's also in the packet, or, as a link. County Clerk Monthly Report is noted in, on file. We come to another resolution, page 158. Topic that's been under discussion this evening and in the past.
I'd like to speak to that, Chair Store. Two years ago, the facilities committees had a series of meetings about how to address the serious issues with Champaign County jails. We were unable to agree on any specific plan moving forward as a committee. Both parties. Regardless of how this solution will be funded, we need to have an agreed-upon plan. This committee is going to be charged with deciding on a plan to bring to the board. We have got to have a plan to move forward. Folks, please support this. We need Democrats and Republicans.
Thank you, Mr. Summers, Vice Chair Summers. Should I go ahead and read the memo, or, no? Okay. Basically, the motion is to form a special committee on jail facilities that would be made up of the Policy Personnel Appointments, Justice and Social Services, and Finance Committees. Do I have a motion to form such a committee, such a committee? Mr. Summers? Ms. Court, second? Mr. Goss?
Yeah, it says in here that your committee is going to be made up of Justice, Social Services, Policy Personnel, and then Facilities. So, is it Facilities or Finance?
Finance.
Okay, then I think we need to.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my God.
It's right, I think Chris spoke. And, and it's, to clarify, it's the chair and vice chair of those, as well as the county board chair. I'm sorry. So, it's the chair and vice chair of the Justice and Social Services, Policy Personnel Appointments, and Facilities, not, not Finance, and also the county board chair, so I'll be serving on this as well.
Yes, Mr. Harper?
Thank you, sir. As I stated earlier, I was against any more stud, or, studies, and I am. I think Mr. Summers is right. If we're going to do this, and I see in the memo that this committee has to have something returned by November 18th, which in actuality is not that far down the road, but who's ever on this committee has to come into it to make a plan, an action plan, and commit to it and get this thing moving. We're one major catastrophe in the jail, either staff or inmate-wise, that could cost this county millions of dollars. So, if whoever gets on this committee, please, nonpartisan, as Mr. Patterson said, or, Mr. Summers said, it's time to take action and get moving. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Mc, is that Mr. Mc?
Carter.
Carter.
I'm just sitting here, I don't know, I guess because I look at the world as far as you punish criminals, okay, they have to do their time, and so, you have to house them, I understand that as well, but also, I'm looking at, you know, we're real quick to say, $10 million, we're going to put $10 million into the jail, but we don't have that same energy when it comes to the non-for-profits that's trying to deter these, these criminals, I guess, from committing crimes. So, I just would like to see a balance, basically. I do understand the urgency to get the county jail in, up to par as far as with staffing and also the physical facility, but also want to see that same energy towards helping people reform their lives and happen, have, hopefully, having a better life after the incarceration process. So, that's my little two cent I wanted to put in, thank you.
My, my question is, realistically, I know we all do a lot, but November 18th, is there any way we can move that sooner? I mean, realistically, we know the work that needs to be done, but if we do three months and then we find out at three months, now we got to pay for another four months of people to be held somewhere. If we can realistically do it in two months and then get something going beforehand, or is that just not enough time? Because I would hate for this study to come out, three months, and we have another month saying, "Oh, now we can't take anybody back. We already just passed half a million dollars to hold somewhere else." This, I would like to, to progress faster than, than slower. Does that make sense?
Mr. Summers?
I think it's going to take some time to get the architectural and engineering information. The last time we looked at it, it's two years ago. There will be significant price changes, and as I stated before, we never came up with a plan that the board agreed on to move forward with. We have to come up with a plan, then the board can go whichever direction they want. If they choose to reject it, then we'll, we'll have no jail. But I don't think moving it forward is going to impact anything to do with the sheriff housing prisoners out of county. We're looking at a timeline that's going to be, at the best, several years down the road before we would have a facility. And we've got to get accurate information before we can make those decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Fortado, you had your hand up?
Mr. Duncan McGuire was long before me.
I'm sorry, Mr. McGuire.
Well, thank you. To answer Ms. Carter's question first, we do have programs throughout the community and the county that we give money to, and we support Reentry Youth Assessment Center. Obviously, I guess you voted on $900,000 already, and there will obviously be more money. To answer Jacob's question, we are going to be spending the $2 million. We're going to spend the $500,000 now, we're going to spend the $2 million to move people and keep them housed outside of the county, away from their families, for three years. We have to make decisions. The facilities committee is responsible for moving the jail forward, and, and we have studied this, done plans. We're not going to do the schematics now. You're not going to decide those before you get, come back with a, a plan, because the schematics will take months. We'll have construction, and we'll be ready. We should just do two months, get it through facilities, and get it started, and quit putting it off. The safety of the people in the jail and the staff has already been in jeopardy, and people have been hurt, and the public is not being served well with the shootings going on throughout the county. There's no place to put people. We can't be shoveling people out of this county all the time. We need to do our jobs, not put it off.
Ms. Fortado?
I support the.
Dr. Fortado.
I support the committee in part because it has a timeline. I think one of the things that's beneficial about a committee like this, I mean, Facilities meets every month, so, Facilities could always say, "Well, we're going to discuss it one more time." Having a committee that has an end date, like, because we're voting on a three-month committee, right? It has an end date, and they're supposed to bring back something. It has an end date, and they're supposed to bring back something. I do think that this is very urgent, and that's why having this sort of lever to move the discussion, I think, is super important. I do think that it's important to acknowledge that, to some extent, and I'm not putting this all on COVID, but that to some extent that has delayed our timeline, because we had very real and, I think, very productive conversations about what it would look like to go out to bond to 2020, and, you know, Jim, you were a part of those conversations. However, just honestly, with the pandemic, that was just not a realistic proposal at that time, and that did delay us. But just because it was delayed, doesn't mean that we don't need to address it. I do think we also need, just frankly, a little bit of time, and I've been in conversation with Tammy and with Jim and Darlene and Kyle, is that we have to look at our funding landscape. I think it's really important to, and I am not, I would, I'm not going to speak to ARPA funds right now, but what I would say is, it is important to recognize that we also have the issue at the sheriff's office, and it's very clear in any sort of reading that I've seen, that that is not addressable through ARPA funding, even if we had the political will to do so. And so that's a big unanswered question, and there's a lot of, that has to be part of the equation. And one of the things that I've spoken with Tammy is bringing in, back in our bond council to give us a landscape of what our capabilities are. That landscape has changed quite a bit since the last time we had them in, because we are two years closer down the line. So the debt that we are currently covering and paying for out of public safety sales tax will be retiring in '26 and '28. And we do have the ARPA money on the table, and that also does change, right, the landscape of what is potential possible if we even have to go out to bond, right? And so, I'm sorry, out to referendum. We're going to have to go to bond, but if we are going to even have to go out to referendum. So all of those things, I think, honestly, to Mr. Paul's point, the idea that we're going to answer all of that in two months, I think, is super aggressive. However, I do want very much for us to have that answer by the end of the year, because I do think that that informs the entire landscape of our budget and the discussions that we have to have. And so I feel like that this is aggressive, but I think it needs to be aggressive because it's a real need. And to Mr. Harper's point, I completely agree with you. Like, the charge of this committee is not to draw a new plan. The charge of the committee is to read the plans we have and come back with a landscape of votes that this board can take. If the charge of the committee was to hire a new firm to make a new plan, I'd be with you voting against it, because we got, like you said, 15 plans on the shelf. That's not what the charge of this committee is. The charge of the committee is to get us to the place where we can vote and have a coherent conversation about financing that vote, whatever it is, you know, whatever we decide as a body to do. This, what we're doing now, is completely unacceptable and untenable. And we have to decide how we're going to move that forward, and it has profound implications on our financial landscape, right? So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. Rosry?
Thank you. We've heard it tonight, obviously, but yeah, since I've been on the boards of May 2011, jail issues been on the table, and again, nothing's happened. None of us can predict the future accurately. I can say accurately that, obviously, the downtown jail is not going to get any better as a facility unless we are truly willing to sink money into it. I don't, and I haven't heard the last, well, I don't know if I've ever heard any board in my time. I've, any board, you know, comprised of the different members elected during the years, say that they want to spend money on the downtown jail because it is in that bad a shape, and it's not what a current jail should be for security issues for both the inmates and the people working in the jail, the corrections officers. So without being able to truly predict the future, though, that means we have to work with what we have, the knowledge that we have now. And the knowledge that we have now is that the downtown jail needs to be closed, and we have an inmate population that means we need to add on to the satellite jail, or we're going to have to be willing to pay to house them out of the county till forever, I guess. And I mean, unless things happen to turn around and we don't have the population in the jail. But as of right now, the current situation is, the current information is, something needs to happen. So it is urgent. I, again, like Stephanie just said, I don't want to see us make new plans, but we do need to bring them together, yeah, so that we can maybe hopefully get something done. Again, you can't predict the future that two years from now, we won't need to do anything other than just close the downtown jail. I guess that's possible. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. But the way things are right now, the best information I have right now would say, no, that's not going to be the issue. We won't be able to just shut the downtown jail and just live with the satellite jail as is. No, we need to do something one way or the other. So I will support this facility and hope that we can get something together that we can all vote on, and ideally, get something moving towards replacing the downtown jail. If I guess this board would want to potentially hold people out of the county for the foreseeable future, I guess that's one thing we could do, but it's not what I would prefer to do. But something does need to happen. It is a time to do something. We don't need to put it off to another board after the next election. One thing with putting it off for another board after that election is people need to get brought up to speed. And then they maybe want their own studies, or, I mean, that's a potential. No, we need to build on what has been, happened in the past of past boards, which is the idea that Stephanie and Stan talked about, not reinventing the wheel with an architectural plan. Yes, we need new prices, and we maybe need to, you know, refine the plans a little bit based on what we know today compared to when those architectural plans were put together. But we don't need to totally go back and let's start from square one. How can we add on to this jail? What are the ideas? Well, we've already got those ideas, so yes, let's please move on with this. And I would say, support this, and let's see something come from this in November. Thanks.
Mr. Goss?
Thank you. I'm only going to support this for one reason. I think we've kicked this can forever, but the only reason I'll support this formation of this committee is it gets an end date. We need to make a decision. We've been monkeying around with this forever. It's time to get something on the table, get a hard vote on it, because, you know, $2 million a year to house, and we're going to have, I mean, we're going to have people probably housed out of county. I agree with Sheriff Herman. I don't want to see us move back into that facility. But we've got to have something done, and if we're paying $2 million a year to house out a county, and that, honestly, I think that's probably fairly conservative. I think that number's probably going to be north of that because of picking up medical costs. Transportation costs are not getting cheaper. But we've got to make a decision. We've kicked the can down the road long enough. So I will support the formation of this committee, only because it puts an end date on it. Thank you.
Dr. Furtado?
Actually, this is, and I'm not at all arguing that 1.5 million is not a lot of money, but I just, y'all just keep saying 2 million, and it's, Dustin's memo says four months for $494, so four times three is 1.5. And I just want to, like, I just am curious, am I, I just am curious if I'm just misunderstanding something. And again, I'm not saying that 2 million's not, or 1.5 is not a lot of money, that's not at all my argument. I just feel like I'm missing something, because this is like the fifth time I've heard that now. Okay, sorry.
My point is, it's 1.67 million? Is 494 times four is like 1.667?
No, times three, four times three, four months times three.
Okay, all right, so it's 1.5.
Yeah.
You're going to lose money that we haven't counted on.
Again, I'm not trying to.
I mean, we're going to push towards $2 million a year, whatever it is. Again, 1.5 million's too much.
Oh, yeah, I'm not at all arguing with that. I just was, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something and how we were getting to 2 million. Yeah.
Mr. McQuire? Oh, wait, Emily, you haven't had a chance to speak. Ms. Rodriguez?
I suppose it'd just be anticipation what Mr. McGuire would, will surely say. I would say just be wary of slippery slope arguments. We will have several opportunities to make decisions on how we fund this. We should not just simply say, well, if we, you know, fund this particular decision, then it will certainly balloon into 4 million. That is not the way that the board works. That is a slippery slope argument. We will have multiple opportunities to make decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. McQuire, you had your hand up for additional comment?
Sure, $2 million also includes, that, the 1.5 million would be housing. That does include transportation, healthcare, everything else to have everybody out of the downtown jail. And as far as this date is concerned, we've watched dates go by for the last 10 years without making any decision. So are we saying now that we're going to build an addition onto the jail? Are we prepared to do that? Because that's the decision you're making. You can make the plans, you can pay someone to draw the plans. You can do the construction. Why are we putting it out three months? Are we waiting for someone else to get injured in jail?
Ms. King?
I'd like to see what comes out of the committee before we start talking about being angry that nothing's being done. I was elected to this board by saying that I'd watched it for over a year and watched previous boards also kick the can down the road when it comes to facilities, when it comes to paying the people who work for the county a fair and equitable rate, wage that's, you know, the same as other counties around us. So, I mean, it seems like we're all here ready to do something about this problem. So let's find out what the committee is going to tell us, and then after that, we can get angry about it.
Mr. Patterson?
I feel like it's already been said, I just want to reiterate. I mean, we could decide tonight what we're going to do with the jail. And the fact is, is that it's going to be multiple years before a new facility is built. That's just reality of construction projects. I think that we need to acknowledge the fact that this county has a long history of building facilities that did not have very good foresight. And when we make this decision, it's not something that I think should be rushed. I'm with Mr. Harper. I think most of the people in my caucus have heard me rant about, you know, study after study after study instead of just addressing an issue. The goal is not to do that. I think that we have a lot of plans that have been put before us, so we have a lot of things to pick from. And also, when it comes to financing, that might even be more complicated of the different options to go through. And I think most importantly, I've heard said multiple times tonight that the county board has never addressed this issue. But the county board did try to address this issue in 2016 with a countywide referendum that failed in all of our precincts. So this timeframe is going to give us, and this is a short timeframe, but this is going to give us the opportunity to have a bipartisan subcommittee that can work together on something that both of our caucuses are going to be comfortable with and able to push forward. And most importantly, I think that we need to work together on this. Shouldn't be pointing fingers. The past is the past. We need to move forward and do it together, because this is an issue I think both of our caucuses take very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, I'd like to ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes? I think that's. There is no chair report. And I think that yield back to the chair.
Thanks, Chris. Next is Justice and Social Services. Get it together, Chris.
Well, you're right, Ms. Michaels. I failed to do that. Gosh.
Excuse me, Chair Store, may I make a comment, please, sir?
Sure.
On the County Clerk's Monthly Report in the packet, it gave us a semi-annual report for June twice, which is a six month, and our July report, but we did not receive an individual June, so if somebody was looking for that, maybe it just needs to be corrected on the website. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Ms. Michaels. I'll make a note to try to get ahold of Clerk Ammons and see if that can be.
Mr. Store, I can make that change. That's an error with the packet. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh.
I can get it sent out to everybody.
Okay, so, okay, that can be corrected?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Items to be placed on the consent agenda be item number eight, two, A through double C, item F, or, excuse me, item C, number one, propose special committee on jail facilities. That's all for the consent agenda.
All right, next is Justice and Social Services. Leo?
Thank you, Chair Patterson. We don't really have much this month. It is the monthly reports for animal control, emergency management agency, probation and court services, and the public defender's office have all been, are available on the website. The Rose Grant's Reentry Financial Report for May and June, information only, is at the very end of your packet. I don't have any other business. I don't have a chair's report, and I don't have any items to be placed on the consent agenda.
All right, thanks. Under other business, we have an update from the ARPA project manager.
Good evening. We wanted to provide an update with two categories. Just briefly, an update as far as the ARPA funds, a recap, just since it's so timely for your discussions. And then we also wanted to provide an update with the project management status. The American Rescue Plan Act is what ARPA stands for. It was passed in March of this year. The program that we are getting these funds through is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. These funds can support government and communities in responding to the public health impacts related to the pandemic and economic impacts that have occurred negatively from the pandemic. These funds can cover costs incurred from March 3rd of this year through December 31st of 2024. And the exception would be premium pay that can go back to the beginning of the pandemic. The Department of Treasury has four major categories that they've outlined that these funds can be spent on. And for reporting purposes, these four categories actually turn into closer to seven categories. But the first one is the public health emergency related to the pandemic and the negative economic impacts. As you've already discussed, costs that prevent COVID and mitigate COVID and provide health services to the public and facilities and staff and expenses can be covered. Also, for disproportionately impacted communities, as you've been discussing, this funding can provide services to those individuals, for example, childcare and early education and housing-related topics, addressing health services and community violence as well. These funds can also help with job training and getting people back to work and unemployment-related services for workers, for potential workers, rehiring staff, and to assist businesses and nonprofits as well. And the second major category is a premium pay category, which I've also been talking about. This is for essential workers that have been doing essential work in person, onsite, not telework. And it can go back to the beginning of the pandemic. And this is not only for government employees, but healthcare, essential services, transportation, food service, and production, education, and others. And the guideline that they've listed is that you can provide up to $13 per hour in addition to their wages and not tucksey 25,000 per eligible worker. The interim rule from the Department of Treasury, which is still interim, and hopefully they'll finalize it soon. But it does say that lower-income eligible workers should be prioritized. And that if anyone's pay would go above 150% over their average for their category, it would need to be justified and talked about. The third major category is to address government revenue loss and the general revenues. And there's an equation that's provided by the Department of Treasury to look at the general revenues prior to pandemic, current revenues, and projected revenues. So that's also an option. And then the fourth major category is for infrastructure and water sewer or broadband improvements. And specifically, they say to improve access to clean drinking water is one of the options, to improve wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. And they specifically cite that federal regulation would need to be adhered to for the Water Pollution Control Act, for example, Section 603(c), Section 1452 of the Safe Water Drinking Act. And so with each of these topics for ARPA, they're all tied to other regulations, or a lot of them are. And so it's something to look at for each request, how it's tied to other restrictions or allowances or regulations that are out there. And the third major category is to provide high-quality broadband, which of course you've been talking about as well. And the interim rule says that wages should be at or above prevailing rate to establish these infrastructure aspects and to also include provisions to hire locally. And so the other major update we want to provide tonight was related to program management of this. And currently, I've been working with the list that Darlene had started to outline all the requests that have come in and to also add categories for if additional funding exists, if there's initial eligibility. And so that's a work in progress to make those updates as we get these requests. We're also having discussions with various individuals to refer them to sections of the act, or the interim rule at this point, and other restrictions or guidelines that may be out there. And the reporting aspect is a major timely priority right now. We just saw yesterday that the Department of Treasury finally opened up the portal to provide reporting. Our first report will be due August 31st, it's the interim report. And after that, we'll have quarterly reports. First one will be October 31st. And so with each of the departments or agencies that we provide funding to, we will be asking for them to provide the appropriate supporting data for how they've used the funds and how it qualifies. And the other aspect that we want to make sure in the future is to get the criteria kind of prioritized from the board's perspective, from your perspective. So initially, Darlene had provided a decision tree and one of the memos. And of course, the first step is to determine, you know, major eligibility with a project. But after that, at some point, we'd want to know what your priorities are as far as topics or criteria or adherence to other goals that you have for the county. And so that's something where, as you continue your discussions, we'd like to know those priorities to be able to help work on that list even further. Those are the major updates I want to provide tonight and just let you know where we're at with everything.
I forgot I was sharing this part. Stephanie?
Just to sort of piggyback on this, and I know we've discussed this at length in our caucus, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of this. The plan is we have several more study sessions, so just so everybody's on the same page. The plan is at the second budget hearing, that is on the 24th, we will be hearing from elected officials and department heads about the funding requests for fiscal year 2022 that they have submitted for ARPA. We're going to keep that separate from the budget discussion because we want to keep those as separate conversations so that everybody's clear what pot of money we're talking about, okay? Then we have three more study sessions planned, one on addressing community violence, one on addressing housing insecurity, and one on addressing water infrastructure and maybe expanding that out to a little bit of rural infrastructure needs. Those, and so if you have somebody in your district, I know, I think we've received one from Ludlow. I know we've had conversation about Vernon Hills, that is going to be at the E-LUC meeting on September 9th. After September 9th, which is the last budget hearing, then, or is the last one that we have scheduled, I also wanted to mention that we are going to be hearing from, to Mr. Storey, has brought this up to me several times, what are we doing for impacted individuals and impacted businesses? And there's a lot of other funding within our community that's going to that. The, and all of that, and we've passed a lot of those grants, right, over to RPC. Delitzo is going to come to the full board meeting at the end of this month to give us an update on how well that is going and if they're seeing needs that are being unmet in our community, so we could have that as part of the conversation. After that, in September, and this is the key date, at the September COW, and I'm not saying at the September COW we're going to decide everything, but at the September COW, every board member needs to come, based on those categories that you had up earlier, that are eligible categories, and come prepared to say, for the landscape of the federal money over all of the years, where would you like that money to go? Right? So, you know, I want to, I think we should put 4 million to this and 10 million to this. And again, it is going to be as best as we know, right? This money goes through 2026, five years ago, we didn't even know there was a pandemic, right? We just, the Senate just passed an infrastructure bill, that might change, you know what I mean, what we, what we're thinking. But as best as we know right now, then the idea is based on that conversation, we will get a memo from the executive's office that speaks to not only where we see this money going in 2022, but generally speaking, where we see it going, right? For the, for the landscape of us having the money. Listen, I don't know, the wheels might fall off this bus, that's the plan, right? It's, and that's sort of the, the landscape of the plan. But this is what I hope. I genuinely hope that at the COW, so first of all, prepare, the September COW is going to be a little bit longer, okay? I figured y'all would like that better than having another meeting. You could tell me if I'm wrong. Two, I genuinely hope that every board member speaks to where their priorities are. And out of respect, because I know, I mean, I know what Stan's going to say, right? I have asked that when we, we have this decision-making tree thing for the meeting at the COW, that the Justice and Social Services internal budget is separated out from the gen, from the overall money discussion. Because, right, there's other money that had, one of the things we have to decide is how much money are we spending internally on county stuff? And then how much money are we spending externally on everything from broadband to water, things like that, right? And I have asked that that, that be separated out to a specific discussion point. So that, you know, you don't have to just say, I think we should spend this money internally. If you want to say X, Y, Z in terms of Justice and, and the sheriff's office, that you can, that you're able to articulate that. That's, that's the plan going forward, and as I've said every time, right? If y'all got a different idea, hit up Kathy and Darlene and me and let us know, and Jim and Kyle.
Thank you. RPC and Glenn Delitzo's coming, as you talked about. My understanding is, as far as housing's concerned and rental assistance, RPC has money for that housing assistance, including for landlords. There's been some issues with people actually filling out the paperwork. You know, I'd like to get a better understanding of where that is and a complete list of the funds that RPC has and what they're using them for, both as you, as you described it, their normal funds and the additional funds they have and where they're going, so we're not duplicating our, our work and can spend, move the funds further.
And that said, actually, Delitzo is going to come to the board meeting at the end of the month to give us that general landscape. Lisa, who oversees the rental assistance funds, is going to be coming to the, the hearing on housing insecurity specifically to speak about the rental assistance in more in-depth and challenges. So if we have more specific questions, because she oversees that particular fund, so she'll be there at that hearing. And they've both confirmed for both of those.
All right, anybody else? Stephanie, just clarify, when you talked about how we would separate the discussion item, you said Justice and Social Services. Did you just mean like our law enforcement?
I'm sorry, yeah, I meant the sheriff's office needs and then the rest of the need, like, because I know that that's, listen, I just, I know that that's a question that y'all are going to want to discuss as its own separate issue, so we're going to put it on there as its own separate issue, right? Because I, I do think, I mean, if we have a conversation like, eh, we think we should save half of it for county, internal county needs, then it really isn't a real conversation because we haven't had that, that, the tougher conversation about specifically, what are we talking about with the sheriff? And I don't know, I think, I think we got elected to have those tough conversations. So I want it specific, right? Because that's the conversation we need to have.
All right, does anybody else have any comments? All right, the next discussion item is a discussion on premium pay request from ARPA funds. Anybody want to speak to this topic?
All right, so we just wanted to bring it back up again because, you know, we had a conversation last time and we didn't reach any decisions. We had a conversation in finance agenda, and what we came away with was, it's pretty complicated. And also that the three of us weren't deciding it, and so we wanted to bring it back up to you. That said, where we left it last time is we have a specific request from the sheriff's office for two classifications within his landscape for, I think, a total of $5,000. And then there was some conversation about, are we going to do anything for anybody else? I'll just be perfectly forthright, what I shared with Mr. Goss is I don't anticipate that there is going to be will in this body to have enough votes to only give money to the sheriff's office. I do, however, think that it is a worthwhile conversation to tier things out. And if we could find money for everybody, and let me be clear when I say everybody, everybody that's eligible under the law, people that worked in person and people that are within the financial parameters outlined in, in the ARPA law. I do think that, I could be wrong, but I do think that there would be appetite to have a conversation about paying more to people that are on their 24/7 operations, particularly those in law enforcement. I think they've made compelling cases, we heard one today, about the challenges that they're facing. And potentially doing something now and doing something again through the budget process. So we can, we could provide funding for that classification of people now. Those folks are still under Level One, Phase One, whatever it's called, stipulations. At least, I personally would be supportive of revisiting that again in the budget and getting the money again. But that, I mean, I'm just going to be realistic, that's what I think the conversation is. If that's a conversation we can have, then it's, I think, worthwhile to have. If that's a conversation that, and I mean folks from both parties, right, are willing to have, then, and not, then honestly, there's no real point of having that conversation today because then we'd have to push it to the budget process, right, if we are going to address it. So I don't know if that was clear, but.
Mr. Summers?
I would say now that I would be willing to support the sheriff's proposal for 24/7 county employees with the caveat that we are also providing for the rest of our county employees. I will not support one without the other.
Mr. McGuire?
Thank you. As she described, and you did, as far as the county employees are concerned, do we have a list and a number of hours that people are actually 24/7 face-to-face with the public?
So to answer your question, no. And I would, I would highly, 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 highly suggest that we don't try to figure out who worked specific in-person hours because our HR system simply doesn't do that. And so what I would recommend is that we have, like, we talk in round numbers, round numbers which are, would still fall with under the, I don't know what the word for it is, parameters, if we did spell it out by hour, which is, you know, 13. I'll just tell you, I mean, this was my proposal when I spoke to Mr. Goss, and I, and I told him I'm not at all wedded to these ideas, and I honestly haven't chatted about this at great length with my caucus. But just to have our, our starting, my suggestion was 750 across the board for each, for all employees, again, that are eligible within the landscape of working in person and within the financial landscape. And then 1,500 for Dustin's folks now, and then another 1,500 through the budget process, so they would get 3,000. That was just my suggestion. It's real hard to tell because I'm not exactly sure how many of Dustin's folks are also in that full pot. But total, it would be in between 600K and 650K, full stop. And for Dustin's people, all of them, no matter what their salary is, I think we could do that within the, the law.
If I can talk to you, thank you. So since we can't identify who was in, who was actually working face-to-face, then we're going to automatically short the sheriff's office and the corrections offices because you're saying that we can't have one without the other. And I don't know of anybody that is working for county government that has been going to shootings and chasing down people or working face-to-face with people with COVID for the last month, few, 18 months or whatever it's been. They couldn't go home, they couldn't stop. They're short-staffed because we're not supporting them well enough now. We have to give them a bonus. But we're going to hold all that up because we can't identify who was actually face-to-face.
Darlene? I'm actually not chairing this meeting, sorry. I apologize, Chair Patterson.
Mr. Paul?
Again, saying one person should get, one shouldn't, from the information she shared, all essential workers are eligible. So to say that, again, just because you work for the government means you get a bonus. If we're not looking for, find a way to give this to nurses, people at McDonald's, everyone who had the same pandemic together, then I don't think it should go to, to, to any government worker, regardless of what their job is. Because if those same funds can be used to generate the public as a whole where everybody benefits, I think that would be a better use of that money. Because if, then now we can say, you know, the guy who gets mugged robbing for like Domino's, job is as dangerous as anybody else's, and he should get money too. As then, are we just going to give everything back? And we, that could be something we look at, and just write everybody a check then.
Oh, I guess, I just want to say as a comment, I definitely hear your concern. I've heard, you know, that discussed before, that there were people who have gone through the pandemic and did not get this type of a bonus. The way I see it is we're, we're talking about employees that we are responsible for. We're not responsible for the employment of people in the private industry. Over the past 18 months, there have been programs like PPP to allow for businesses continue to pay their employees. We have seen, I mean, particularly with some corporations, that employees were receiving premium pay for some time. And not to mention, people who actually did get on unemployment, at least initially, were getting an extra $2,400 a month. We don't pay super well here. I think that we have a lot of staff that if they would have been laid off and on unemployment, they actually would have had a larger income than they would with their normal salary. So that's just kind of my take on that. I think that, you know, we're responsible for our staff. Darlene?
I would just like to mention that we have studied your question, Jim. What we've determined is that our financial HR system cannot figure out exactly what hours people worked in face-to-face or not in face-to-face or in the office or not in the office. The computer doesn't collect that kind of information. But the, what we can determine is that. But what we can determine is that, from my knowledge, and probably the supervisors could do this, I'm only aware of three people in the entire county that did not work face-to-face at least some part of that time. So if we were trying to do an hourly rate, like say, a dollar an hour or something like that, we probably wouldn't be able to determine how many hours that was. But if we're trying to do a single-stipend type of thing, we could say that that would be fair across the board because we know everyone worked at least part of that time face-to-face. That would be my argument for that.
Keep forgetting I'm the chair, sorry. Who? Jody?
Yes, I just want to say that I agree with what Jacob said, that it is not fair to give to government employees because there are lots of people in this county that went without pay at all. And your comment to say that we are only asking, or we're only, for these county employees, we're only responsible for them, that is not true. We are responsible for every county taxpayer. So I cannot support paying if we're paying to everybody because I do not think that that's fair. There's, I think we would have so much backlash from the community as a whole if we're giving the county employees bonuses when there were so many people in this county that were hurt with, with no pay at all. Not one county employee went without pay the whole pandemic. Not one. So I cannot support it.
Ms. Lusick?
I just wanted to frame it maybe in a different way and say that we are looking to benefit all of the residents of Champaign County with things like the broadband that we're looking to expand all over the county. We're trying to increase services. We're trying to make things better in Champaign County for everybody. While we can't, you know, pay everybody a bonus, we don't have the funds for that within ARPA or with any, any kind of finance that we would ever have. I'm hopeful that the broadband that we're looking at, the potential jail expansion, the things that we're looking to do, will, will provide benefits in a way for all the members of our county.
I'm sorry, I guess.
I just wanted to note, it is one thing to have a gut-level feeling about what is and is not fair, but the matter of legal authority, very different. It seems if we are, have a conversation about what landlords that are working at McDonald's might receive, that's something that you could take up with your congressman or your senator. We are here to govern the county, to distribute, to look after county employees. That's where we, that's where we live. That's our neighborhood. Can't quite go outside of that. So I would just encourage us to keep a narrow scope on where exactly our authority lies.
It says we can, though. She said it out loud, that we could pay, we could give it all the hospital workers if we wanted to, and it's our board to, to rule upon, as you just said. We can choose to spend the money wherever we want. So to say that we can't give it to essential workers is just a doubt like wrong.
Are we okay to go back and forth? Or do you want to shut this down? All right, all alone, just move on then.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Store?
Are we, do we have to make a decision on this tonight?
No, it's just discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not on, for a vote, because I didn't think we would be able to make a decision tonight. I mean, I just honestly was like, are y'all, do you want to have this conversation? I mean, and it doesn't seem like, I haven't heard anyone say, I haven't heard one that would give us 15 votes said that they are, want to. So if that's the case, then we could just stop talking about it and take care of it in a different way.
Ms. Carter?
As Mr. Mike Ingram mentioned, that we should also include some provisions about having in-person meetings, I mean, Zoom meetings added on for future purposes. We should also, we should also add something about leaving the meeting before it's adjourned. That is very disrespectful. The meeting is not over. I would like to leave too and go home to my kids, but I know our business here is not finished. So I would also like to add, maybe something should be added into our laws as far as leaving a meeting before it's adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Passalacca?
So how much of the Zoom has to do with our own regulations and State or Open Meetings Act? I think if there is not an executive order, we are bound to be in person. Is that not correct?
No, it's not correct.
Okay.
I would disagree with that. We are, we're bound to be in.
Jim, I didn't call on you. We go in order here. So the attorneys, both our attorneys and Ansley Leek, a law firm that we use, have made it pretty clear, as well as, Darlene, did you speak to the governor's office?
So I have been investigating this because there've been some requests about going back to Zoom meetings with the rising COVID spread. What I can tell you is that the legal advice that we've gotten says that we can have a Zoom meeting still if the county, well, in this case, it would be me, the county executive, because I'm the jurisdiction, decides that it would be, for health reasons, not prudent or safe to continue to have a meeting in person. I have to do that specific meeting by specific meeting, not just in general. So the governor still did issue a pandemic executive order for the whole state, so we can fall under that, but he did not specify the Open Meetings Act restrictions. However, individually, we can do that by the jurisdiction. So what I've been thinking about is trying to hold the larger meetings that we think will have a lot of public here by Zoom, just because I don't think the room can accommodate a huge number of people with us that close and still trying to keep some separation. But the smaller meetings, I think we probably still would be able to have in person, and it would have to be a meeting-by-meeting decision. As long as there's an executive order by the governor, I guess that we're able to do that.
Thank you. We had this discussion a few years ago, and it's the policy of the county board, not the decision by the executive board. This is a policy, not administrative responsibility to determine our meetings. It's a county board's decision, and our rules state that we should have in-person meetings. And I'm sure the governor would love to run the state by executive order for the next 20 years, maybe be reelected affirmatively by himself. But if we have not continued that emergency order locally, which is another policy of the county, there is no emergency order in this county because we had to vote on it first time. It has not been extended, and the county executive should have the responsibility to determine this board's policy.
All right. I felt Darlene did a pretty good job of explaining that, but I mean, just to summarize, the attorneys have said, and the governor's office has said, that this is something that's allowable, has to do with an emergency order, it's not to do with, you know, what the previous status quo is with the Open Meetings Act, and it is way off topic. So does anybody have any more comments on premium pay for ARPA? All right. Seeing none and seeing no other items on the agenda, call this meeting adjourned.